Good evening and welcome to the May 20, 2025 City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting. I'm Mayor Salim Nice. This evening's hybrid City Council meeting is being brought to you in person and by Zoom. We're also broadcasting live on MI Channel 21 and on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome and thanks for joining us tonight. Council members, please have your microphones turned on for roll call. City Clerk Andrea Larson, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Wyker does not appear to have joined us yet. Councilmember Weinberg.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Here.
And Mayor Nice.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And City Clerk, can you note that we have a quorum and that Councilmember Androl and Reynolds have joined remotely? Next, we have the Pledge Allegiance. If you're remote, please turn off your video. If you're in council chambers, please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to approval of tonight's agenda. If there's no questions, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl.
Aye.
Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. Agenda is approved. And next up, we have the City Manager Report, for which we welcome City Manager Jesse Vaughn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am Jesse Vaughn, the City Manager. We have a brief presentation tonight, just a handful of updates for you. Next slide, please, Casey. And next one. Council, look ahead to your upcoming meetings. Your next City Council meeting is Tuesday, June 3, here at the Community Center. Our next Board and Commission meeting on the calendar is the Planning Commission at the end of May. Apologies, we have a lot of activity in the room right now. Just a reminder that we keep our calendar updated on the website for all of the City Council meetings, Board and Commission meetings, and any other special meetings. Next slide. A couple of capital project updates for you this evening. The first one is on the booster pump station upgrades. Council, you may recall that our capital plan included replacement of all five pumps at the city's reservoir, and also included the addition of two smaller pumps that we call jockey pumps. The new jockey pumps are important for reliability and pumping efficiency, especially in times of low-flow conditions. Last week, we made significant progress with the conduit and wiring installation for pumps six and seven. Testing and startup on these pumps is scheduled for next month. Also, very happy to report that despite some initial challenges, pumps one through five were replaced in December and January. We are very close to having this essential project complete. Very exciting. Okay, next slide, please. Another update on a really important utility project, the SCADA system, which is short for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, is being upgraded, which provides our monitoring of our entire sewer system. We started working on this project in 2019, and it's taken that long to design and implement the project. Construction started in October 2024. We've been working really intently on this for the last six months. Valley Electric, our contractor, has successfully upgraded 16 city-owned pump stations and one flush station. It's a mouthful, to the next generation of our SCADA system. We have one remaining site is currently undergoing a retrofit, which is part of the broader King County sewer upgrade project, and that will eventually be integrated into the new system. So, really exciting news. Some major utility projects starting to reach completion. Light rail. We've had a lot of questions about the opening of the light rail station. Council, you are likely aware that Sound Transit recently announced, or was released in the media, that the station here on Mercer Island, the opening was likely sliding into 2026. I don't have any more information on that than what you've read. But meanwhile, we are still planning for the opening of the light rail. You can see in this photo, we've got our public safety teams out with Sound Transit on the I-90 bridge. We're orienting ourselves to the new corridor, the equipment, planning for response to the bridge and the light rail line in partnership with cities to the west and east of us. So, I just want to acknowledge our emergency management team, our police department, and Eastside Fire and Rescue for coordinating with Sound Transit and all of the regional partners on these training and tabletop exercises. Nice work, everybody. Switching topics entirely, wanted to give you a heads-up that our pickleball courts are entering the final phase of construction. This requires a very, very short closure, and these courts are super busy, so we know this is going to be impactful. First part of June, all of the courts will be closed to install the acrylic surfacing, which is that final surfacing that we've been waiting for. And then, at the end of the June, we'll be closing just our westernmost courts to do some restoration work on the mural that's at the courts. All of this work is weather-dependent, so if Mother Nature starts throwing some rain our way, we may have to adjust the schedule. We have a Let's Talk page that's dedicated to this project, and we'll keep everyone updated. Next slide. Council, this is a reminder to you, and also to our volunteers and Board and Commission members, that tomorrow night, here at the Community Center, from 5:00 to 7:00, we will be hosting a volunteer appreciation event to recognize the many individuals that have contributed time in really many areas of the city, parks, thrift shop, emergency management, and more. So, we'll invite you to come out and help us recognize all of the community members that make this such a great place to live and work. Hey, big, big news here. We've, we've released the lineup for the Mostly Music in the Park Concert Series this summer. Starting July 17, we'll have six concerts at MerciDale Park running until late August. Also, really happy to announce that the food trucks will be back on-site each week, as well as activities for the kids. So, mark your calendars, Thursdays, 6:30 to 8:30, at MerciDale Park. Few announcements here. Wanted to give a shout-out to Recreation Coordinator Jeremy Jasmine, who received the Mickey Corso Leadership Grant from the Washington Recreation and Park Association last week. This is an honor that recognizes emerging leaders and provides them with resources to support their professional growth and development. I believe that Jeremy's going to be using this scholarship/grant for a training, a national training program. Jeremy's been with us for, gosh, I think, more than 10 years. We sure appreciate all he does for the city, and congratulations, Jeremy. All right, final slide. Hey, it's National Public Works Week, which is fitting, considering all of the capital project updates I provided earlier. This week, we're honoring the great team of staff that keep all of the infrastructure running smoothly year-round, and when it's not running smoothly, they're the first ones out to fix it. This year's Public Works theme is people, purpose, and presence, which is super-fitting, as it lines up really well with the work that our Public Works team does. So, when you see our Public Works employees, please stop and say thank you, and thank you from all of us for the great work you do.
Okay. Our next item of business is appearances, which is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the City Council on any item, except items requiring a public hearing, any quasi-judicial matters, any campaign-related matters. Note that there's a public hearing later in the agenda, and if your comments pertain to the King County Public Benefit Rating System application, then please hold your comments until the public hearing. Tonight's agenda will include in-person public appearances and remote public appearances via Zoom. Individuals wishing to address the council may do so in person, or by Zoom, or telephone, provided they've registered with the City Clerk by 4:00 PM today. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be called by name. Remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole, and not to individual council or staff members. Any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks who becomes boisterous, threatening or personally abusive while addressing the City Council may be requested to leave the meeting. Please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record. There'll be a timer on the screen. You all have three minutes to speak. When your time's ended, I'll thank you for your comments and move to the next speaker. City Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker tonight is Addie Smith. Mr. Mayor, I do not see Addie in the meeting, and I'll move to the next speaker. Our next speaker is Lauren Alexander.
Welcome.
Hello. All right, am I good to go?
You are.
All right. I am Lauren Alexander, the founder and director of the Mercer Island Rowing Club. I've been a Mercer Island resident since 2021, and I have Jessica Apodaca, who is a board member as well. We're here today to provide info about our organization to the council and the community at large, to garner additional support and awareness about our organization. We are a registered nonprofit organization that cultivates a deeper connection to our environment and community by enabling individuals of all ages and abilities access to rowing. We want to create a community that keeps folks on the island and engaging with our parks in a new way. We've seen great community interest through city plans and surveys. First being mentioned in the 2006 Luther Burbank Master Plan, when there was a mention of a shell house, which was then brought up again in the 2022 Prose Plan as a unfinished recommendation. We also saw within that prose survey that 44% were interested in rowing on Mercer Island. We've also seen a huge demand through just outreach in the community. We have over 300 interested parties who want to be involved in rowing. We also know that thousands of Mercer Island residents participate in non-motorized water activities, but most have to go off-island currently. All other islands in the area have rowing, and there are no rowing clubs within 30 minutes of us. I also want to mention that Jake Jacobson was a fierce advocate, advisor, and donor for us, and we want to continue what he helped us start. We plan on starting small and building, so in summer 2026, we have approval from the Parks Department for a temporary summer program for all ages. We've been gifted rowing shells and a storage tent, and are ready to bring this sport to the community in the near and long term. Things we're hoping the council keeps in mind: future-proofing the docks that are being redone at the Boiler Building. With a couple of small adjustments of lowering the freeboard to five inches, this was enabled greater access to all low freeboard sports, not just rowing, such as kayaking and paddleboarding. Thinking longer term, in the both mid and long term, past the summer program, finding a home that makes sense for these boats to offer year-round programming for all ages. In summary, we want to build a rowing organization that gets folks out in nature and fostering the community we all greatly love on Mercer Island. More information can be found on our website, mercerislandrowing.org.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul Quinn.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Paul Quinn, and I live in Sammamish. I'm speaking to you as an individual who cares about fairness and how Mercer Island's solid waste customers are charged for disposal. Right now, we charge our residents and businesses for disposal based on the size of the container being picked up. The effect of this message is to say we don't care how much you put in or divert from the landfill. This approach is unfair, as it charges all people based on the size of the container rather than what's in the container. And we know this is wrong, as our water, our gas, electricity charges are all based on what we use rather than on the size of the wires and pipes connecting us to service. I've emailed you handouts. Handout number one shows a graphic of the trend of the monthly cost for garbage disposal for your single-family residences. It continues to go higher and higher, and just recently, as I'm sure you know, King County is telling us their disposal charge is passed on to the city's residents, and businesses is likely going to double in coming years. What's worse than the trend line is that the city doesn't allow residences or businesses to reduce their costs for disposal by properly diverting materials for recycling and compost. In fact, in effect, there's an unfair increase in cost to folks who work hard sorting recyclables and composting food scraps by charging them the very same as others who are indifferent. This is unfair, and it can and should be changed by weighing the refuse each customer creates. To begin this change, I recommend a pilot program called Smart Disposal, which will help significantly improve the city's diversion rates. Note, Smart Disposal is an innovative initiative. It's not a company. Handout number three outlines how Smart Disposal works in some detail. I now briefly describe what Smart Disposal is. Smart Disposal weighs each container picked up by the hauler at each single-family home. This system, using postcards mailed to each resident, provides data specific to the resident, including a landfill diversion rate per pickup, and how their use of the utility compares to others in their community. I provided handout number four to show an example postcard report to residents. This helps us move from a toss-and-forget mindset towards making better choices. We all know that feedback through measurement works, because water, electricity, and gas are metered. They help us to moderate our use. Smart Disposal provides the meters our disposal utility needs. The city's current initiatives don't provide sufficient impact to improve trends needed to reach the city's own diversion goals. We need this council to provide the urgency and the leadership to drive Smart Disposal forward. What I recommend to you today is the city implement Smart Disposal. Metering and reporting to residents what we dispose of at the curb provides fairness to help us abate the increase in cost of disposal. This council should support fair pricing for a disposal utility. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Welcome.
My name, Alex Zimmerman. Yeah, I'm a Jew for almost 80 years, disabled. Yeah. I want to speak about something what is I never seen in my life. Number one, before I will speak about this, I give you information who I am. I'm a supporter, I'm a MAGA member. I have 6,000 days of trespass, and five times you prosecute me. This is how Democrat, Nazi, Gestapo, fascist, antisemite, junta doing with people who have different opinion and Jew. So, right now, city policemen, ordinary policemen, give me trespass for one year. It's expired right now. Jewish community center, give me trespass for one year. I never go inside. Yeah, just give me in advance. A big synagogue, but as I go almost for 40 years, you know what it's mean. Give me trespass too. Guys, is all trespass come from Jewish organization. Two council hairs Jew, community center is a Jewish, and I first time come almost 40 years or 30 years ago. Yeah. Give me trespass for one year, never give me chance go inside. And big synagogue, you know what it's mean, what is I go for 30 plus year probably. Give me trespass for one year. My question right now to everybody, how many freaking antisemite Nazi pig live in Messley Island, start from council here? I think for two, council here is a Jew doing this because I have different opinion, or because I call you a Nazi, or fascist, or junta, or bandita. Is everything legal what is I doing? I speak around 5,000 times. I speak every week, five, 10 times, everywhere. So, my question right now to you guys, are you real Nazi antisemite? Yeah, exactly. Or you a mentalist, sick people? How is this possible? Messley Island, who have too many Jewish people, you know what it's mean? Give me three trespasses, what is absolutely don't have sense. Is this you check this, you know what it's mean? And I don't sue nobody because I'm sick from this Jewish antisemite, what is support Democrat mafia. It's exactly, I don't call them a Jew. I call him a Judas. It's exactly who this people who support Democrat. And I know this for 40 years. It's a nightmare what has happened right now. You cannot give people trespass only because they Jew. Bring the low page, what is Gestapo have, you know what it's mean? And I doing this for many years. First time from 96. Viva Trump, viva new American Revolution. You need stopping terrorize and acting like antisemite.
Thank you.
There are no further speakers tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. With no further appearances, we move to the next item of business, which is approval of the consent agenda, which contains AB 6681, May 9, 2025 Payroll Certification, AB 6682, Certification for Claims Paid April 1, 2025 through April 15, 2025. City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting, minutes of May 6, 2025, AB 6683, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number 25CO7 to renew interim regulations for temporary uses in structures, including outdoor dining, AB 6684, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number 25CO8 to renew interim residential parking regulations responsive to SB 6015, AB 6685, Public Display of Fireworks Permit Issuance for Summer Celebration, AB 6690, Contractor Selection for Water Supply Pipeline, and AB 6691, National Police Week 2025 Proclamation Number 359. Council, as their motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
And second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Councilmember Androl.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. Consent agenda is approved, and our first item of regular business is AB 6686, the 2025 Board and Commission Annual Appointments, Resolution Number 1677. Council, Section 8.12 of Council Rules of Procedure provides that all appointments to city boards and commissions be made by a vote of the City Council during a regularly-scheduled meeting, and that each City Council member will complete a written ballot, casting a vote for the identified open seat and board or commission. If there are any more than one open seat or board or commission, then each position will be voted on separately. This position with the longest term will be voted first. The applicants that receive the most votes, provided they receive a minimum of four votes, will be appointed to the expiring or vacant seats on the board or commission. The names of the applicants selected will be added to Resolution Number 1677, with final approval required by a vote of the City Council. Since the City Council is participating in the meeting in person and via Zoom, the City Clerk will send email ballots to council members. The City Clerk will collect ballots from council members, naming their candidate of choice. The City Clerk will tally the votes and read aloud the votes and outcome of the vote. As noted in the email we received from staff yesterday, we're delaying the appointments to the Open Space Conservancy Trust for the June 3 meeting, as there's a separate process for those appointments. The first elections are to fill four positions on the utility board. Position number three, expiring May 31, 2029. Position number four, expiring May 31, 2029. Position number five, expiring May 31, 2029. Position number seven, expiring May 31, 2026. Council will start with position number three, expiring 5/31/29. City Clerk, please distribute the ballots.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The ballot has been sent. Mr. Mayor, the votes have been tallied. George Marshall received votes from Nice and Rosenbaum. Steve Milton received vote from Weinberg. Brian Thomas received votes from Androl, Reynolds, and Wyker. No candidate received four votes. We will vote again.
Okay. Just a quick pause. We have how many open seats on the utility board?
Four seats, Mr. Mayor.
And we have how many applicants?
Four, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so council, we're gonna have to work together to get this done. I'm gonna tell you my voting order. It's gonna be 1, 2, 3, 4, starting at the top. So, George is one, Stephen is two, Geraldine is three, and Brian is four. We can have a food fight over the order, because one seat is just slightly shorter-term than the other, but we're gonna have to name all four of these folks. So, City Clerk, are we gonna start that ballot again?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'm gonna go in the order that's in the packet. So, George, Stephen, Geraldine, Brian.
Hey, Salim.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Brian Thomas has been on the utility board before, so I'd like to see him in a longer-term seat than a short seat. So, friendly recommendation to change your order a little bit.
You wanna go from the bottom?
That works for me. That works for you.
Happy to do that, too. So, then the order would be Brian, Geraldine, Stephen, George. Any other? Okay.
Are you ready for me to send the ballot, Mr. Mayor?
We are.
Position number three, round two ballot, has been sent, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The votes have been tallied. George Marshall received one vote from Councilmember Weinberg. Brian Thomas received votes from Androl, Nice, Reynolds, Rosenbaum, and Wyker. Brian Thomas is appointed to position number three.
Okay, very good. City Clerk, please distribute the ballots for utility board position number four, expiring May 31, 2029.
Mr. Mayor, the ballots have been sent.
That's the old hand, I think.
Sorry. Mr. Mayor, the votes have been tallied. Geraldine Poor received votes from Androl, Nice, Reynolds, Rosenbaum, Wyker, and Weinberg, and is appointed to position number four.
Okay, very well. City Clerk, please distribute the ballots for position five, expiring 5/31/29.
Mr. Mayor, the ballots for position number five have been sent. Mr. Mayor, the ballots have been tallied. Steve Milton received Steve Milton received votes from Andrell, Nice, Reynolds, Rosenbaum, Wyker, and Weinberg, and is elected to position number five.
Very well. That leaves us with one more. So City Clerk, please distribute the ballots for utility board position number seven, expiring May thirty one, twenty twenty six.
Mr. Mayor, the ballots have been sent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The ballots have been tallied. George Marshall received votes from Andrell, Nice, Reynolds, Rosenbaum, Wyker, and Weinberg, and is elected to position number seven.
Okay. Thank you. The next elections are to fill two positions on the Arts Council. Position number five, expiring five thirty one, twenty eight, and position number seven, expiring five thirty one, twenty nine. I'll note that we're filling position number five due to a resignation that was received yesterday, effective immediately. And so counsel, we'll start with position number seven, the longer term, expiring five thirty one, twenty nine, for which I will just start at the top with Britta.
Mr. Mayor, the ballot's been sent. Mr. Mayor, the votes have been tallied. Britta Eckel received votes from Andrell, Nice, Rosenbaum, Wyker, and Weinberg. Pam Rock received a vote from Councilmember Reynolds. Britta Eckel is elected to position number seven.
Perfect. City Council, or City Clerk, please distribute the ballots for Arts Council, position number five, expiring five thirty one, twenty eight.
The ballots have been sent, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The votes have been tallied. Pam Rock received votes from Andrell, Nice, Reynolds, Rosenbaum, Wyker, and Weinberg, and is elected to position number five.
Excellent. The next election will be to fill two positions on the Park and Recreation Commission. Position number five, expiring five thirty one, twenty nine, and position number six, expiring five thirty one, twenty nine. Counsel, we'll start with position five, expiring five thirty one, twenty nine.
Mr. Mayor, the ballot's been sent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The votes have been tallied. Mar Brettman received a vote from Rosenbaum. Sarah Marksen received votes from Andrell, Nice, Reynolds, Wyker, and Weinberg, and is elected to position number six.
Okay. Thank you. The next one is gonna be position, is it number five?
No, that was five. I just had the wrong sheet.
Okay. So.
We're doing position number six.
We'll do six now.
The ballot's been sent, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, the votes have been tallied. Carolyn Berseth received a vote from Andrell. Mar Brettman received a vote from Nice, Reynolds, Rosenbaum. Stephen Majewski received votes from Wyker and Weinberg. No candidate received four votes. We will proceed to round two, Mr. Mayor.
Very well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, per the rules of procedure, I'll remove candidates who received no votes.
Very well. It's riveting.
Mr. Mayor, the ballot has been sent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The votes have been tallied. Mar Brettman received votes from Andrell, Nice, Reynolds, Rosenbaum, and Weinberg. Stephen Majewski received a vote from Councilmember Wyker. Mar Brettman is elected to position number six.
Great. All right. That being the extent of the ballots, do you need a recess to compile that resolution?
No, Mr. Mayor. Chief of Administration is putting the resolution up on the screen. I'll read the appointment section if you would like.
That would be great.
Appointment, section one, Arts Council pursuant to M I C C three dot five, five dot zero, three, zero. The city council hereby appoints the following individual to the Mercer Island Arts Council for the designated term hereafter set forth. Pam Rock, position number five. Term expires May thirty one, twenty twenty eight. Britta Eckel, position number seven. Term expires May thirty one, twenty twenty nine. Section two, Appointment of Parks and Recreation Commission pursuant to M I C C three dot five, three dot zero, three, zero, C. The city council hereby appoints the following individuals to the Mercer Island Parks and Recreation Commission for the designated term hereafter set forth. Sarah Marksen, position number five. Term expires May thirty one, twenty twenty nine. Mar Brettman, position number six. Term expires May thirty one, twenty twenty nine. Section three, Appointment of the Utility Board pursuant to M I C C three dot five, two dot zero, three, zero, C. The city council hereby appoints the following individuals to the Mercer Island Utility Board for the designated terms hereafter set forth. Brian Thomas, position number three. Term expires May thirty one, twenty twenty nine. Geraldine Poor, position number four. Term expires May thirty one, twenty twenty nine. Steve Milton, position number five. Term expires May thirty one, twenty twenty nine. George Marshall, position number seven. Term expires May thirty one, twenty twenty six.
Perfect. Counselors, their motion to adopt Resolution Number one, six, seven, seven, appointing those voted on to fill the vacancies on the Arts Council, Park and Recreation Commission, and Utility Board.
Salute.
Okay. Moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Andrell. Any discussion? Not seeing any. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Mayor Nice.
Aye.
And Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Motion passes. And just a quick thank you to Daniel Becker, who's here in the audience, for his service on the Arts Council, who was also the resignation that was effective immediately, which helped us optimize not opening recruitment again at a later date, when he is joining us on the council. So congratulations, and we look forward to working with you, and thank you for your service on the Arts Council. Our next item of regular business is A B six, six, eight, seven, Public Hearing on the King County Public Benefits Rating System Application, Resolution Number one, six, seven, four. This public hearing is now open as of five forty one P M. Individuals who register with the city clerk before four P M today may make public comment on this agenda item. You'll be called by name when it's your turn to speak. Please be quiet. Please state your name and city of residence for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. City Clerk? Has anyone signed up for public comment on the hearing today?
Mr. Mayor, no one signed up to speak during tonight's public hearing.
Okay. As there's no further testimony, the public portion of this hearing is closed as of five forty two P M. Look how efficient I am. And we welcome C P D Director Jeff Thomas.
Thank you. Good afternoon, counsel. For the record, Jeff Thomas with Planning. Joining me for this item is Planner Grace Mannahan. I believe this is her first council meeting, but she's been with us for a couple of years. So everyone be nice to her tonight. And we also have Bill Bernstein, who's the Public Benefit Rating System Program Manager with King County, available in the background. Should there be questions after the staff presentation that he can help shed some light on and answer for us. With that, my final comment will be, we don't do many of these here on Mercer Island. This is actually the first one, since I've been with you since twenty twenty. So I have worked in another jurisdiction where they do come up periodically. So Grace has a short presentation that will give you a brief overview of the program and the application, and then we'll get it back over to council for any questions. Grace, go ahead and share your screen and take your way.
Thank you, Jeff. So the Public Benefit Rating System Program, otherwise known as P B R S, encourages voluntary resource conservation and offers an incentive to preserve open space on private property in King County by providing a tax reduction. The reduction in property tax is based upon the accrual points under the program, and the annual tax reduction ranges from fifty to ninety percent. The last P B R S application was received by the city of Mercer Island in twenty seventeen. I'm just gonna quickly go over the application process. This application was received by King County and then forwarded on to the city of Mercer Island. The King County staff then prepared a staff report and recommendation. Both granting authorities are required to act on the application before July first, twenty twenty five. King County held a public hearing on this application on March twentieth and approved it on May thirteenth. Once both granting authorities have approved the application, an open space taxation agreement will be prepared and then signed by the Chair of County Council and sent to the owners for signature. And then finally recorded with the assessor's office. At that point in time, the property will be formally enrolled. This P B R S request is for a site located at five, zero, four, five, Forest Avenue Southeast. The property is encumbered by Critical Areas and is currently developed with a single-family residence and cabin. The property is currently enrolled in the program as of since nineteen ninety seven. The property is four point zero nine acres in area, and the P B R S tax reduction affects two point nine one acres of the site. This request is for additional tax relief by updating their P B R S resource inventory. The request is to increase the property tax reduction from the current eighty percent to ninety percent. If the application is approved by city council, the tax reduction will take effect for the twenty twenty six fiscal year. After approval, as previously mentioned, the open space taxation agreement will then be produced, signed, and recorded later this summer. A recommended action at this time is conduct the public hearing for the proposed property tax reduction and approve Resolution Number one, six, seven, four, for the proposed Public Benefit Rating System Current Use Assessment for two point nine one acres of the property located at five, zero, four, five, Forest Avenue Southeast. And that is it. Thank you.
All right. Excellent job. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Andrell.
Okay. Hi, Grace. Thanks for your presentation and welcome to your first official city council meeting, I guess. I have a number of questions, and the packet on this is pretty dense. The information may be in there, but I may have missed it. Is this property currently developable further? If the owner were to want to, given the encumbrances with the Critical Areas and wetlands and stuff?
Grace, I'll take your first swing at that. It may be, there may be development potential with some of this property, again, given the critical encumbrances that have been mentioned a few times. My understanding is if the property was to have some sort of future development in the two point nine one acres that is subject to the program, there would be, the property would need to exit the program, or at least the part that's being developed. And there may be some financial remuneration necessary to essentially pay some of the benefit that's been given if the property is developed in some sort of way in the future.
Okay. Great. Mr. Mayor, I have a number of other questions, so I'm just gonna leave my hand up and wait until it comes back around for me again.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah. Just curious, a follow-up question to a question I sent in advance to the meeting. I believe, Mr. Thomas, you indicated that you don't do field verification of the wetland or the stream. It seems to me, based on my limited understanding, that for most other purposes, you don't really fully rely on the G I S mapping, and that you do do field verification. What's the thinking on not doing it here? It seems like it'd be a quick, naively, it'd be a quick drive-by and might initially save us some property taxes if we didn't do it, or if it's not there.
So we actually, we don't, city staff doesn't necessarily go out in the field to delineate wetlands or confirm the presence of watercourses or other types of critical area features. We do have a third-party contracted service that does that. Those services, as part of a development application, are almost always reimbursed to the city from the applicant to do that peer review. In this case, so we did not, we did do our G I S reconnaissance for this particular application that's before you tonight. I do believe, and Grace can confirm this for me, back in an earlier year.
Yeah. In twenty fifteen.
In twenty fifteen, Councilmember, there was a third-party professional reconnaissance done for this property, and the city, the city was not part of that, but that was prepared. So that record is available, that it is available in the public record, and we've seen no evidence that circumstances have changed. seen no evidence that circumstances have changed, given the property location and what we know about that area. So, we are comfortable moving forward with the review that's been done and the record as it exists.
So, I think the 2015 review did validate that there was a wetland and/or a stream. Is that correct?
It did. Again, the city was not party to that directly, but that record does exist. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That reassures me.
Just a quick clarification on one of Craig's statements there. The city's not losing any property taxes, just shifting from this property to the balance of the properties on the island. Is that correct? Because the way the levy system works, you know, we're collecting a levy rate to collect a set amount of dollars. If one property tax gets a deferment, it's just getting picked up by the other property payers.
Do you believe that is the case? Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
I just wanted to say, thanks to Grace for pulling this together. I learned a lot from this AB. I don't think, my time in the council, I don't think we had this come before us before, so I thought it was interesting, appreciate it.
We're going to have a whole bunch of PBRS requests after this. Councilmember Andrell?
Yeah, that's actually one of my questions. I have more than one, but, I mean, given that every property on the island could potentially have an ADU, or now a parent and sub lot, I mean, does everybody who decides not to put a second dwelling on their home have an entitlement to this kind of a property tax reduction because they're not using their property to the best and highest use?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. The program does have criteria set forth, so to, and maybe Bill can speak to this a little bit more, he just popped on the screen. Bill, go ahead and take that question as you see fit.
Sure, yeah. Happy to. Thanks for having me. So, the short answer is that, yes, there is specific criteria that we must use to evaluate whether a property qualifies for the program or not. There's about 25 different, what we call, resource open space criteria that we apply. In this case, I believe, three or four of those qualified getting them to the reduction that they're seeking. But you have to at least qualify for something, and a lot, and I will say that a lot of urban properties in incorporated areas typically aren't good fit for the program, especially if they're kind of your typical, you know, quarter acre house with a little bit of yard on it. This property is a bit unique. It's obviously much larger. It's got a lot more going for it in terms of resource value, so that the program criteria can be applied much easier in this case. But in most circumstances, and this is probably why you haven't seen a lot of applications on Mercer Island, there's not a large, a lot of large property that has the kind of forest cover, wildlife habitat, critical area protections going on, that you'd be able to apply the program criteria to.
Okay. The only other question I have, if nobody else has one, is the residence on the property, is that being used by a beneficiary of the trust, or is it being rented out? Is that, and regardless of what the answer is, is that a relevant consideration?
The, so, I don't know the answer to your first question. The answer to your second question is that the residences are excluded. Do we have a map, by chance, available, Grace, that maybe we can pull up to show the council? The area around the residences is actually excluded from this application. It's the open space portion of the four-plus acres. So, of the four-plus acres of the total parcel, only 2.0, I believe it's 2.91 acres is actually part of the PBRS application. So, here's the property outlined in yellow. You can see over to the left-hand side of the screen, there's 1.09 acres there that's excluded. And then over on the right-hand side of the screen, there's .09 acres that's excluded. I believe the cabin is on the small portion, and the residence is on the larger portion.
Okay. And that leads me to my final question, and thanks for this information. I believe I saw somewhere in the application that there was limited public access to the area that's being requested to be tax exempted. Can you clarify what kind of access the public has to enjoy this property, if any?
Yeah. Bill, do you want to jump in there?
Yeah. So, what's interesting is when this property applied initially back in the mid-'90s, under different ownership, and so this has changed hands a couple times, I believe, over the years. There was an allowance that was granted based on that owner having a willingness to allow public access to occur. Obviously, that's before my time in the mid-'90s, I can't speak too deeply on that, but I imagine there was some sort of community limited access, public access occurring on the property that warranted credit for those points in the program. You'll notice that this go-around, we're actually not recommending credit for public access. That prior award has actually been taken off the table, and that's because the current owner, who I believe purchased the property last year, was fairly adamant that if that was still occurring, that was not something they wanted to be required to continue. So, moving forward under this application, there will be no public access credit being awarded.
Okay.
Well, then I guess my only comment would be, is that other than the tree cover, which is not insignificant to me, it doesn't seem like there's much public benefit with this exemption. It seems to benefit the owner of the land with a significant amount of privacy that they probably wouldn't want to develop anyway, and just give them a significant tax break and shove, push that burden onto the other residents of the island. So, I'm, you know, I mean, this is not a slam dunk to me at all.
Can I just make a comment?
Well, please do. Yeah. I mean, I want, I mean, this is, I want somebody to push back on me on that, if that's appropriate, because I just, I know what I'm thinking and feeling about it, but if there's other perspectives, I'm 100% open.
Yeah. And I guess, one thing that I would mention is, one common misconception about the program, you know, because it does, the title of the program has the word "public" in it, and so oftentimes, when we get applications, or just interest from the public, that's often one of the first questions we get, you know, do I have to have public access? Do people have to be using my property in order to qualify for this program? And the answer, obviously, is no. It's, there's a component to the program where we award additional points for recreation and access on the property. But for the vast majority of folks participating in the county, and I would say the same would be the case for this property, the public benefit really is the protection of the open space resources, the forests, the critical areas, the buffers being provided, the wildlife protections. Obviously, it's kind of a forested, you know, little urban oasis in the very developed Mercer Island. And so, when we talk about public benefit, that's kind of how I would suggest looking at it in terms of the resource protection that's going on there on those several acres of undeveloped forested property. So, less the public recreation and access component, more the forest cover protection component going on.
Any further questions? Councilmember Andrell? I'm sorry, you're on mute.
Sorry, yeah, no, yeah, off mute now. No, none.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
I guess just to pull on that thread from Councilmember Andrell a little more, and I don't know if this question is for VO or not, but, you know, do we have a legal requirement to approve this, given that it's sort of been approved to get the points and the rest of the...
Is that a question? Is that for me? Did you want me to?
No.
Open for anyone who has an answer.
Okay.
A right answer.
So, yeah, there is flexibility in the, you know, state statute where a city can deny an application. There's rationale for doing so, one of them being financial rationale in terms of impact to the community, to taxpayers, that sort of thing. But there is action required that you either approve or deny this application. And I guess I would say that the property is currently in the program, so there's really no going back in terms of it coming out of the status that it's in currently. I think what can be decided on and argued for or against is whether or not this additional 10% level of savings is something that, obviously, the city of Mercer Island is comfortable with and okay with. But again, if you review RCW language, there are, there is flexibility for cities to make a denial based on certain rationale, and one of those being financial impacts.
Councilmember Wyker?
Yeah, I was just going to say, this is just asking for a 10% difference, and it sounds like the 25 criteria are quite robust, and this has already gone through the county's process. Bill, I wonder if you could just speak to a little bit of those 25 criteria? It sounds like this status is not granted lightly, and I'm thinking about the floodgates that could open for a bunch of other properties on Mercer Island that might have critical areas. It sounds like this only makes sense for properties of significant size, and that the property owner is still responsible for maintaining it and removing dead trees and debris and whatever. Like, if you could just talk a little bit about more on that public benefit thing, the incremental increase, it sounds like a lot.
Yeah. And so, I'll start with kind of the backside of your comment. So, yes, it's not, there are, you know, specific requirements in terms of what an owner is expected to do in terms of management. So, it's obviously maintaining the forest in its native condition, addressing any issues in terms of invasives. Obviously, we're not looking to give tax breaks for degraded property, or things that aren't native, don't have forest, don't have native shrubs and plants. So, there's a, obviously, a commitment that's needed from the owner to ensure that condition, that native condition of the property is maintained as such. I would also, again, say, in terms of keeping in mind other aspects that make it hard for folks to qualify, again, property size is a big thing. With the 25 categories we have in place, many of them are acreage-based. You have to have a certain number of acres to qualify, or you have to have a certain percentage of forest cover to qualify, or maybe you have to have an identified wildlife species present. In this case, these property owners, for example, are providing additional buffers to their wetlands and streams, so there's a category that awards points for doing kind of above and beyond what's required in terms of critical regulation, critical area regulation. The last thing I would say also is that we would not consider an application if it was completely under a critical area designation. So, an owner has to do something beyond what's already required by regulation. They have to be giving something additional, something voluntary beyond their wetland, stream buffers. And so, in this case, this owner is giving much more acreage outside of those buffer, those regulated areas that are existing on the property.
Thank you.
I had a quick question on, if you had a property that was, you know, adjacent to a road, like East Mercer Way, and they had trees that were, you know, very close to the road deck, are they relieved of their responsibility to maintain those trees so that, you know, they're not dropping on the road deck, or, you know, that they're appropriately kind of maintained for their position to a road?
Yeah. So, in the back couple pages of the staff report that we produce, that's submitted for this hearing, that the landowner also receives, and then there's also some language in the actual recorded agreement, there is flexibility for enrolled landowners to address health, safety issues. So, obviously, if there was a dying diseased tree that was going to fall on a structure, or across a road, or on a trail, there's flexibility in place with the program to allow for the, you know, addressing those scenarios. So, it's not simply a, this tree's an open space, you can't touch it no matter what's going on. The idea is that you can manage for health and safety concerns, and obviously, something along a road would fit that category.
Yeah, I guess my question was a little bit different, which was, are they relieved of the requirement to do that? You know, is it shifting liability to the city in a way that we're approving the PBRS? They're claiming, you know, the health of the forest is some reason to not maintain a tree that is adjacent to a road deck?
Yeah, I think the answer, in my opinion, would be no. I mean, they still own the property. Granted, it's under an open space agreement, but they still have the responsibility to address those types of issues should they arise in terms of hazard or safety concerns. I guess I, my answer would be, I wouldn't see it, I wouldn't see enrolling in this program having, being a method for an owner not to be liable, or be having to address such an issue.
Great. And then a quick follow-up. The, I can't find the exact language right now, but I read earlier about the invasives, and it had a language about, like, an epidemic of invasives or something? There was a word that qualified the invasives, and I was wondering, you know, is the presence of ivy climbing a tree, you know, meet the bar? Or do you have to have, you know, an overrunning of the property to kind of meet the bar?
Yeah. I think maybe, I'd have to look at the specific language, but the words that come to mind for me are, you know, infestation.
Yeah, that was the word.
Okay. So, I think the idea is, obviously, in Western Washington, it's very rare to see a property that's completely weed-free. I mean, everything's going to have a little blackberry potentially, or maybe a couple shoots of ivy running up a tree, that sort of thing. The idea is that for any property that's participating in the program, the owner is required to control and eradicate as much as possible. So, it's not fair for us to say you can't have a single thorn of blackberry in your forest, but if things, over time, become, you know, become to a situation where there is an infestation, or large parts of that open space are being impacted by such things as ivy or blackberry, part of our landowner communications and the agreement in place for us to work with the property owner to ensure, you know, through our monitoring and compliance, that any such issue that becomes more of a concern is addressed over time. And so, you know, these are, this is a long-term commitment that these folks are engaging in.
Okay. Has anybody reviewed the property to see if that infestation bar has been, you know, held, or?
Yeah. So, any application that King County receives, staff, myself, or my colleague, we're doing site visits, that's one of the first steps of the approval process, is to evaluate the condition of the property, how the categories, the open space criteria are applied. And then if we note things like an egregious amount of invasives, something that needs to be addressed, we'll work with the owner in terms of how do you want to address that? Do you want to work on restoration techniques? Or perhaps, are there areas of the property that are too heavily impacted that you'd rather not enroll, because the commitment would be too great to get the condition up to more of a native open space that we would require?
Perfect. All right. Counsel, any other questions? Excellent. Counsel, is there a motion to approve Resolution number 1674 for the proposed Public Benefit Rating System Current Use Assessment for the 2.91 acres of the property located at 5045 Forest Avenue Southeast, Mercer Island, Washington?
So moved.
All right. That was a tie.
I'll give it to Councilmember Weinberg.
Moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Any discussion? Not seeing any? Please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Nice?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye, Epstein.
And Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Motion passes. Our next item of regular business is combined presentation of AB 6679, the Fiscal Year 2024 Year-End Financial Status Update and Budget Amending Ordinance, and AB 6680, Forecasting the City's Financial Position Through the First Quarter of 2025. We welcome Finance Director Matt Mordegh. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Nice. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and City Manager Bond, and staff as well, who are attending virtually. I am Matt Mordegh, your Finance Director, and our financial analyst, too, Ben Schumacher, is joining us remotely, and he is going to steer our deck. So, Ben, would you please pull up our first slide? Great. Next slide, please. We have two significant finance-related items on the City Council's agenda this evening, and so we're going to combine those two items into one deck. The 2024 Year-End Financial Status Update, which is AB 6679, and the May 2025 Financial Forecast, AB 6680. I'm going to stay at a pretty high level as we review the city's current financial position by first looking back at how the city fared in 2024, and based on the most recent financial data, we're going to project forward and begin assessing some of the challenges that are on our horizon. I'm going to pause for questions between topics, as well as at the end of the presentation. And so, I just want to take a minute and thank City Manager Bond and the finance team, whose collective efforts were what resulted in the inf... in the information and the analysis before council tonight. Next slide. Okay, we're gonna begin with a summary on the city's finances in 2024 with an emphasis on fund balance. So fund balance is an accounting term. The council has heard me mention this term many times, and as a refresher, it's, refers to the net difference between the assets and liabilities within a specific fund at a given point in time. The city's financial policies distinguish between these different categories of fund balance, which are illustrated here on the slide. But just in simple terms, we distinguish between resources that are reserved as a result of state laws or prior city council actions, compared to resources of fund balance that are available. At the end of 2024, the general fund had a total fund balance of $12.3 million. Of that amount, $7 million was reserved, with about $5.3 million remaining in available or unassigned fund balance. Next slide. Most of this unavailable fund balance at the end of '24 is due to revenues exceeding budget expectations, with some savings on the expenditure side of the general fund budget. This table lists the five key drivers that led to this available fund balance at year-end. And I'm gonna walk through how this occurred over the next series of slides. I, I do wanna call out that this is a, a significant number, and there's a number of factors that led to a $5.3 million available fund balance. But I'm gonna underscore that this is largely due to the council's prudent year-over-year fiscal management. Next slide, please. As the council will recall, this is the fourth year that the city has posted a positive year-end available fund balance. Under council's direction, the, we, staff has set aside $4.1 million of that one-time resource in the city's Municipal Facility Replacement Fund, which was established in the wake of City Hall's closure in 2023, and is a resource that we're setting aside to help address the short and long-term needs for the city's facilities. I would submit you need to go back to 2021, when the city council drafted and unanimously adopted new financial management policies that really set a clear direction for managing the public's limited resources year after year. Next slide. And so we built the 2023-2024 biennial budget in the fall of 2022, which was somewhat of a unique point in time for the city, the region, and the, and the country. We were simultaneously fighting our way out of the pandemic while we were also bracing for an economic recession. I'll remind the council that it was in August of 2022 that inflation, as measured by CPIW for our region, was 9.2%, which was a 40-year historic high. And it was three months prior to that when the Federal Reserve began their campaign of raising the federal funds rate to try to address that, that rate of inflation. We leaned on the city's financial management policies, and we built a conservative 2023 and 2024 budget. We have since emerged from the pandemic and completed a, a significant body of work, which City Manager Bond is going to speak to later this evening. But I wanna come back to the 2024 year-end analysis and point out that, that the primary drivers of this available fund balance at year-end were sales tax and the city's interest earnings associated with our investments in the local government investment pool. Next slide. So this chart provides a 10-year lookback on the city's actual revenues related to general sales tax. When we built the 2023-2024 budget, we were relying on the most recent two to three years of financial data to inform our projections in 2023 and 2024. And again, we were, as was the rest of the region, bracing for an economic recession. But as this chart indicates, the city experienced significant growth in 2020, from 2022 to 2023, in sales tax revenues, and that held constant from 2023 to 2024. Consumer spending did not slow down, and a recession did not happen. Next slide. The same logic followed with interest earnings. This line graph provides a, over a 20-year lookback of the city's interest earnings related to the general fund. And you can see, between 2020 and 2021, 2022, there was no revenue associated with interest earnings in the general fund. And this served as the basis for our assumptions when we built the 2023 and 2024 budget, and speaks to why the year-end available fund balance, both in 2023 and 2024, was so atypically high. Next slide. I have five more slides to cover some highlights from the 2024 Year-End Financial Status Update, starting with REIT, the city's real estate excise tax revenues, which is a 0.5% tax on property sales. This is a restricted revenue that supports the city's capital program. It is a non-general fund revenue. And over the past few years, it has notably underperformed, due to a number of factors. But a main driver being that there's a higher cost of borrowing that's resulted from the Federal Reserve raising the federal funds rate to, uh, address inflation. And that has resulted in reduced property sales. Our, our total revenues in 2024 were $3.9 million, which is up from 2023 by about $500,000, but it was below our 2024 budget expectations. And so staff is closely tracking REIT, and we have been tracking this and have taken these considerations into account when we built the 2025-2026 biennial budget. And so we will stay ahead of this and return to council if we encounter any cash flow issues for the city's capital program. Next slide. Under the, the city council's direction, at the end of 2024, the city fully invested $7.2 million that was awarded to Mercer Island from the American Rescue Plan Act Economic Stimulus Package that was adopted at the federal level in March 2021. The total fund, the $7.2 million, was invested in a variety of programs and services, but I just wanted to highlight a few here that there was about $1.4 million that the council committed to household emergency assistance, people who were in, in households that were dealing with economic duress, as well as the Health and Human Services that is largely provided by the city's Youth and Family Services Department. $1.8 million were invested in the city's streets, our parks, and our underground utility systems. And $3 million was committed to supporting the, the planning and improvement work that is, has been underway for the city's facilities. Next slide. I just wanted to include this table for the record. It's taken directly from Agenda Bill 6679, but it illustrates how all of the city's ARPA funds were invested across a variety of programs and services, going back to 2021, and for each year all the way through 2024. A key point here that I wanna underscore for the council and the community that all the funds that the city was awarded were invested in Mercer Island. And that's not necessarily the case for all communities that received ARPA funds as of the second quarter of 2025. And so we have invested all of these resources within the timeframe, and we have abided by the guidelines that have been set by the U.S. Treasury Department. So I just wanted to make that point. Next slide. 2024 was the first year of our partnership with Eastside Fire and Rescue, who is now providing fire and emergency medical services here on Mercer Island. In 2024, we spent $9.1 million, which was about $600,000 more than what we spent in 2023. And this increase is really tied to part of the one-time expenses associated with transitioning from these services being provided by Mercer Island in comparison to being now provided by Eastside Fire and Rescue, as well as the collective bargaining agreement being renegotiated in 2023. And with it came a 4%, 4.5% cost of living adjustment. There was some reduced spending in different cost centers associated with fire and emergency medical services. That includes overtime, less expense on liability insurance, and building maintenance costs. In May of 2024, the city council adopted new, a new cost allocation policy, which essentially equips staff to assign indirect expenses, like internal, that are provided by internal service departments, like the finance department, human resources, legal services, to the departments that, that benefit from them. And so I went through with the, the finance team, and we did an exercise where we essentially included the fire department and these fire and emergency medical services as a cost center. And based on the, the newly adopted policy, we estimate that there was about $232,000 in indirect staff time and resources that was not used to support fire and emergency medical services as a result of this new partnership. Next slide.
Quick question on the, in the transitional cost, you're doing a balance sheet move where you're taking a liability off, and you're paying it down, right?
Yes.
So it's not that there was a cost to the transition that is, that is like a, a step up in wages or something? It's, it's the reduction of a liability off a balance sheet paid over three years, which is, would have been a liability that sat on the books if we hadn't done this as well.
That is correct.
Okay.
I appreciate that clarification. Okay, next slide, please. When we transition from one biennial budget to the next, staff bring a list of budget carryforwards, which, to the city council for your review and approval. This is essentially moving budget resources into the current biennium for work that began in the prior biennium but was not yet completed by December 2024. And so, Ordinance Number 25-10, that's a part of AB 6679, is outlines in detail all of these budget carryforwards, which are summarized on this table. Next slide. The contingency fund, the city's rainy day reserve has a current balance of nine, $4.9 million, and it exceeds the target funding level, which is 12.5% of the general fund expenditure budget, which amounts to about $217,000 over the target funding level. To adjust this balance requires council action, and because the expenditure budget changes throughout the calendar year based on the budget amending ordinances that the finance team brings to you, based on what's going on in, in the fiscal year, we don't recommend adjusting this right now. This is something that we can revisit as part of the mid-biennial budget work this coming fall. Okay, next slide. I'm gonna pause here and see if there's any questions on the '24 Financial Status Update.
Okay, council, any questions? Councilmember Reynolds.
Hey, Mr. Morde, thank you, and thank you for answering all my questions earlier. I'm still trying to get a sniff test around the, the interest earnings, which are lovely, at $2.5 million or so. But if I'm doing my math right, I, I think we earn about 4.5% or something on our, on our money that's invested in the state pool. So that would suggest we've got about $50 million in assets sitting around? And the, the, the data you presented is all kind of an income statement format, income-outgo. Do we have the equivalent thing that shows a balance sheet of what our total assets are, what our liabilities are, and, and what the, the fund balance is at the bottom, the unrestricted fund balance?
Yes, we process our financial statements every year, and we're in the, and that work is underway right now. We're gonna put together our 2024 financial statements. I anticipate they're gonna be done this month and shared with the State Auditor's Office in June. So you'll be able to see that, that trial balance that you just mentioned.
Okay, I will look forward to that, thank you.
Councilmember Weicher.
I just wanna highlight that ARPA slide. Like, that was awesome work by your team, and Jesse, and Parks, and Human Services. Like, everything that was going on during COVID and afterwards, to spend that money on time and within the constraints that came with that funding. I just think that's really great that you guys did such good work over time when everything was so chaotic. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, not seeing anything else, carry on.
All right. So we have about 12 remaining slides, and we're gonna turn our attention, rather than looking back, now we're gonna look forward with the May 2025 Financial Forecast. Next slide. Staff typically brings a financial forecast to the council as part of our biennial budget process each fall. The director's team met earlier in the year, and we, we decided to present an updated forecast for, for a number of reasons. When the finance team started reviewing the latest financial data from the end of 2024, the last six months of 2024, including the, the first three months of this year, signs point to healthy performance and relatively stable economic conditions. But when we, we started looking beyond the financial data, as everyone is well aware, there, there's economic disruption happening in real time between the proposed federal spending cuts and shifting trade policies, and Washington State is also grappling with a budget deficit. And so if you add to that the October 2024 Financial Forecast that was part of the 2025-2026 biennial budget work, that forecast identifies structural challenges in the city's operating funds, which is why we're here tonight. And so we elected to update the forecast with the latest information to begin working with the council to navigate the challenges ahead. Next slide. Tonight, I'm gonna focus on the general fund and the Youth and Family Services Funds. The forecast is updated, as I mentioned, based on the last six months of additional data from 2024 and the first three months of this fiscal year. And we're using trend data that goes back to about 2022. This forecast is different than what the council has previously seen, most recently in October of 2024, because we're presenting multiple scenarios for the general fund with a focus on ending fund balance, given the degree of heightened uncertainty at play. Next slide. The three scenarios essentially differ between favorable, most probable, and unfavorable conditions. There's many underlying assumptions at play, but at a, at a high level, the favorable scenario essentially extends the growth rates that were experienced at the end of 2024 and into 2025 through the first quarter, all the way through the current calendar year. The most probable is based on the analysis of our latest financial data and the different socioeconomic indicators that we track that may influence the general fund over time. And then the most, the third scenario, unfavorable, is projects what happens to the general fund if an economic recession occurs later this year, resulting in impacts to household spending, and potentially would trigger changes in monetary policy at the federal level. Next slide. And so the probable scenario is where staff spent most of our time building out our, our financial projections based on the city's current financial position. Revenues through the first quarter of this year were healthy. And so it was on this basis that, that we built out the probable scenario and forecasted new trends through the end of this year, specifically for a handful of the city's revenues, which has resulted in an additional $1.2 million that we're projecting in revenues by the end of 2026, relative to what was adopted in the '25-26 biennial budget. The primary drivers here are, again, sales tax and interest earnings. Expenditures are projected to meet budget expectations, and it's really not until 2027 that we anticipate expenditures are gonna outpace revenues by a projection of about $1.6 million. Next slide. This is the six-year projection for the general fund. It is a tremendous amount of information, so we're gonna walk through it from top to bottom. You start at the top with the beginning fund balance net of reserves, which is essentially, going back to previous slides, it's the available fund balance for the general fund. Then we have the revenue categories in the section beneath that, and then the expenditure categories that follow underneath that. At the very bottom of the table, which is difficult to see in the council chambers, but you can see the ending fund balance net of reserves, the projected anticipated ending fund balance for each fiscal year. From left to right, we have fiscal year 2025 all the way through 2030. And so in the very top left, in 2025, staff has estimated and assumed a beginning available fund balance of $2.5 million. of $2.5 million, which is notably less than the $5.3 million that I had previously mentioned we ended 2024 with. We anticipate that the, the difference there is going to be used to address emerging needs in the current fiscal year. I want to draw your attention to the bottom of the expenditures table, a portion of this, this forecast. The net operating over/under row, which is bordered here in red, this represents the difference within a given fiscal year between the projected revenues relative to the projected expenditures. And you'll notice, if you can see it, you can't because of our, our visuals here in the council chambers, but the net operating over/under remains positive in 2025 and 2026. And it's not until 2027 that we, we see it go to about $1.55 million, where expenditures are outpacing revenues by that amount. And it grows over time. In 2030, we're projecting that it could be about $3 million difference between revenues versus expenditures in the general fund. At the very bottom of this table, you can see the ending fund balance. And this is where we focused our forecast, because we wanted to be able to project how this changes over time. When you look at the ending fund balance net of reserves, it's projected to end in 2025 at about $3.4 million and grow to about $3.9 million. And then because of that structural issue that I explained in 2027, you can see that it begins to get drawn down. And it's not until the end of 2028 and the beginning of 2029 in this most probable scenario that we anticipate the ending fund balance going negative. Next slide, please. And so this slide illustrates everything we just walked through in that previous pro forma by tracking the available fund balance at year end for each of the six years on this, this line graph. The numbers that are outlined in blue are the ending available fund balance that is from the most probable scenario that's depicted by this blue line. The black dotted line represents the favorable scenario and the, and the red dotted line represents the unfavorable scenario. In all three cases, the ending available fund balance goes negative. It's just a matter of when. And that essentially means that savings from prior years can no longer address the expenditures exceeding revenues in the current fiscal year of this chart. Next slide. The Youth and Family Services Fund has similar structural issues, but it is stabilized in the current biennium due to the use of the operating fund balance. This operating balance was established by the city council as part of the financial management policies that were adopted in 2021 to address emerging funding issues within the YFS fund. The May forecast has updated our revenue projections for the revenues associated with the Youth and Family Services Fund. And we have reduced the projected revenues for the thrift shop. And that's because the thrift shop at the beginning of this year, between February and March, was closed so that the staff team could complete essential services to the building. There needed to be renovations done. And the staff team worked quickly and that work was, is completed. But as a result of that, the thrift shop was closed. And so we have since worked internally and updated our projections for 2025 and 2026. And that is resulting in about a $340,000 decrease in the revenues coming in for the thrift shop for both 2025 and 2026. And it's unlikely we're going to be able to make up that revenue. The latest projection in Agenda Bill 6680 takes this into account, and we are projecting about an $800,000 operating deficit in 2027 that grows over time. Next slide, please. This line graph illustrates the operating balance in the Youth and Family Services Fund, and you can see how it is drawn down fully in 2026. Next slide, please. And so some of the key takeaways here. The structural deficits in the out-years indicate that we have very important work ahead. Using available fund balance now is essentially affording the city team and the council time to think through these financial challenges. I want to assure the council that the staff team is working in earnest on this. And we will return during the mid-biennial budget process with updated information that's going to take place this fall in October. We're going to update our projections and the potential long-term impacts to the city's operating funds. Next slide. Staff plans to return to council in short order with some recommendations on the potential disposition of the 2024 year-end available fund balance. Next slide. The recommendation before council this evening between these two agenda bills is to adopt ordinance number 25-10 to amend the 2526 biennial budget. And with that, we're going to end a very long presentation. Thank you for your attention and open it up for questions.
Okay, council, any questions? Council, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. This is great. You know, kudos to everyone who's on the financial, of course, I'm blanking on the name of the subcommittee that was put together with financial.
Ad hoc committee.
The ad hoc committee for.
You could just thank us by name. Sam, Craig, and Wendy.
There you go. You know, that work was obviously important and really helped lead us here. I also think this, I'll echo what Wendy said about the ARPA funds and how thoughtful the team was to spend those, you know, in ways that, that really helped us. You know, one thing that struck me about the, the second piece here is, is the unpredictability of everything. So I really appreciate your recommendation to sort of pat on some of these funds the way that, that we are. You know, there's just so much that could, could change in the next six months, and I don't think anyone knows exactly what's going to happen. Obviously, the governor signed most of the, the budgets into place today, but, you know, that could easily change in a year. So I appreciate that. I think the other takeaway here is everyone should go to the thrift store and see if we can make up that, that $340,000. I have a question. I just wanted to sort of make a couple of points there, but I appreciate this. I think this is in-depth and I look forward to the next presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reynolds.
Similarly, I just wanted to make a comment and a thank you to Mr. Morne and his team. Very thorough analysis, very clearly presented. I had about 20 questions before the meeting. He's answered all of them, and I wanted to thank him for that. Well done.
Sure thing. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Not seeing any. Counselors, a motion to adopt ordinance number 25-10, amending the 2025, 2026 biennial budget.
It's a move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Not seeing any discussion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
Councilmember Androw.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Motion passes. Our next item of regular business is AB 6688, the 2025, 2026 Work Plan Update and Legislative Session Impacts. Welcome, City Manager Jesse Bond at the podium.
Switching things up, following the lead of our very amazing finance director. Thank you, Matt. Great tee up for part two here. You know, councilors, we are working on these slide decks over the last several days, and the staff will tell you I was a little last minute getting mine done here. The finance presentations combined with the work plan update really comprise what I would describe as a state of the city, which we don't do, but we're kind of doing it tonight, so thanks for your time. Ally's going to help and drive for me. Thank you, Ally. We'll try again. That's okay. Everyone stretch their legs. There we go. All right. Next slide, please. Tonight, I plan to do a quick look back on our accomplishments, so look forward on the work plan and then talk about next steps. Next slide. Council, when I checked in with you in February at the planning session, we were primarily focused on the PSM facility discussion at that time. And we didn't do a deep dive into what we accomplished last year and the year prior. I think it's really important to, to look back and recognize all that we accomplished amidst resetting, adapting, pivoting, as many things were changing, including city hall closing to major water emergencies, weather emergencies, and more. I'm really proud of us, all of us. That's thanks to your leadership, city council, the resilience of our fantastic staff team. And I would be remiss if I didn't give a huge shout out to the community that has worked alongside us and with us at every step of the way. It's really what truly makes Mercer Island great. And I'm proud to be serving as your city manager as we head to the next biennium. Let's talk about a few of the things that we accomplished, and I promise you I won't go over all the text on this slide, but we will be posting the deck online if anyone would like to take a look. You know, when we do our presentations, we always end with YFS and the thrift shop, and I think it's because it's alphabetical. So I decided to start with the thrift shop for this presentation and YFS. You know, this mighty little resource that we have here in our community that started out many decades ago as just an idea in a garage sale is now directing funds to support Youth and Family Services. The volunteers and the staff work with a shared mission and purpose during a very challenging times over the last few years. I'll remind you that the thrift shop completely shuttered for almost two years during the pandemic. We laid off all of our staff and we had to build it back. I am so proud of that team. Last year, thrift shop sales grew by 14%. And we won't see that increase this year because we closed for some much-needed renovations. But I know that they are watching this presentation tonight, and I know they are going to try to make a dent in that loss because that's who they are. We also have just an amazing group of volunteers that we'll get to recognize tomorrow night at our volunteer appreciation event, who are also part of making this such a special place to work and drive resources for Youth and Family Services. Next slide. Speaking of YFS, at the leadership of Derek Franklin, we have secured nearly $3,000, $300,000 in best starts for kids grants. The King County Classroom Presentation Grants that we've received annually increased to almost $50,000 a year. We're starting new work, and this has been really intentional. We've been very focused on youth and mental health services for youth and family. But we have a large senior adult population here in Mercer Island, and they've, they've said, hey, we need some resources too. I'll talk more about what that work plan looks like in a minute. Emergency assistance is up. The demand is up. We served 93 households with emergency needs in 2024. Requests for utility help is up 88% from 2023, and it's trending that direction in 2025 as well. We've completed a round of staff training and we're carrying now, I'm not going to say that right now, oxo, for, we're carrying, we're prepared to respond to overdose response. We've also been working to expand food security through Hope Link and Farmers Market Partnerships. Two of our counselors are fully licensed now. And unfortunately, I, we have text running on the screen. I have to remember to change my slides. We've also introduced the Parent Labs Education Series for parents at all grade levels. Turning our attention to really, I think, one of the, the main drivers of '23, '24, and it's going to be taking a lot of time in the next four years, is infrastructure modernization and facilities planning. As I already noted, we faced a number of unforeseen challenges in the last two years, but that created opportunities for us. City Hall permanently closed unexpectedly. We had to rehouse staff. We had to deploy temporary police portables, deal with some upgrades to extend the life of the Public Works Building. Thank you to everyone that worked through that. And city council, you said, well, let's get to work on the replacement buildings for these essential services. And so we did. Right away in 2024, we began the design work for the new public safety and maintenance facility, which is very exciting. We're progressing towards schematic design, which represents about a 30% milestone in the design. And I'll be coming to you the first meeting in June with that update, which will also include an updated cost estimate. And then later in June and into July, we'll be reviewing a potential bond measure for November 2025. Those two images on the screen are pretty hot off the presses. Those are some early renderings of the facility. We'll have the full deck available for you at the June 3 meeting. Next slide. Some other things we're really proud of looking back. We have new pickleball courts, and wow, they are popular. There's a picture on the screen there at Luther Burbank Park. We are nearing completion of our new water meter project. All of the water meters on the island were replaced last year, and we're expected to be live with full system functionality by the end of this year. The remaining work has to do with the antennas we need to operate the system. We completed a really important trail safety improvement project up at Aubrey Davis Park, right near Faroglia Fields. We also, you know, the way capital projects work is you're designing projects. At the same time, you're building projects. So last year, we were working on park planning for two playground replacements, Roanoke and First Hill. And for the last, gosh, four or five years, we've been working on the designs for the Luther Burbank Waterfront and Dock Project. Roanoke and First Hill playgrounds are under construction now. Luther Burbank has another year of planning and permitting. It's a big project and will be under construction in 2026. We also completed the work on the North Reservoir, relining those tanks. The South Reservoir is, work has been done this year, and the project is almost complete. Next slide. So much more. We have a really long list of capital projects. So I'll just say the new modular buildings for police were implemented. Luther Burbank Boiler Building Phase One was completed. The water skater system replacement was completed. The sewer system is almost done now. We brought the booster chlorination station online, which, may, some of you recall, stemmed way back from one of our early water emergencies. That was a 10-year project. Super excited to go live with that. And we also completed a really robust residential street resurfacing projects. Next slide. I asked the staff to help me with the numbers because we often talk about the projects, but we, we miss the stuff that's just happening day to day. Our Public Works operations teams are amazing. These are the folks that will be housed in the new PSM facility. They responded to over 1,000 service requests last year, 2,100 utility location requests, 20 illicit discharge events, almost 35 miles of pavement markings. It's like Groundhog Day. We have to do that every year as they wear down. We did a whole lot of work on the water system. We cleaned and inspected nearly 35 miles of sewer main, cleaned 34 miles and inspected 13 miles of sewer main. Really proud of the volunteers that helped us achieve all of this work. 74 volunteer events, nearly 1,000 people volunteering. Let me say that again, 1,000 people volunteering in our parks. 2,300 hours in parks and open spaces given back to the city. That's a really remarkable number. We've been working on a lot of restoration projects around the island, including at Pioneer Park, which is funded partially by the Parks Levy. We planted over 800 trees and shrubs and issued 55 vouchers for our community members to plant trees on their property. We also are constantly looking on ways to improve our operations. We implemented a new fuel card system for fleet vehicles, which improves our tracking and reporting capabilities. Next slide, please. On the sustainability side of the house and related to the important work we did with the adoption of the Climate Action Plan, we're hosting important events to collect hard-to-recycle items, like the Ridwell Events for plastic film and Styrofoam. I thought this was fascinating. We recycled more than one ton of batteries last year. That's, that's amazing. That's a relatively new recycling program here. We've been working on a heat pump program. We received $100,000 grant to begin working on the EV charging infrastructure plan. And you'll start to see, as I'm talking through these things, how they, how they overlap with other teams and also set us up for the future. That EV charging plan, we're working on it now because that new PSM facility is being designed to be EV charging ready as our fleet converts to electrical over the next 10 to 20 years. That facility will be ready for that conversion. We're also out testing equipment. In fact, that picture there is one of our maintenance employees with. In fact, that picture there is one of our maintenance employees with a battery-powered leaf blower. It's working okay, but we're doing what we need to be doing and getting ready to convert that equipment as soon as we have the tools that will meet our knees. That's a big pile of leaves, and the blowers, the blowers don't always last that long, but the equipment is getting better and better. It's really exciting. All right, next slide, please. Recreation, the Department of Fun. This is, you know, obviously, a unique service that we provide here at the community center, and much of what we do is tied to revenue. And so we've been working since the pandemic on a recreation reset. You may recall the plan we adopted that was a business plan and a strategic plan all rolled into one. Last year, we had a goal of a 58% cost recovery, but they well exceeded it and achieved a 70% cost recovery for division-wide services. That's a really great number for recreation. They continue to host a number of events, and we're looking forward to a really amazing summer lineup. They also did some innovation. They said, you know, it's taking too much time when people want to book a field. We have a field available, and you have to call us, and it's very clunky. So they switched on online field reservations, and it boomed. We are filling up a lot of field time and collecting revenue. I'm really proud of them for making that happen. Finally, I just want to mention that when we have emergencies, especially without a City Hall, this building becomes the home for the Emergency Operations Center. And this November, when the bomb cyclone hit, this was also the home to a good portion of the community. The recreation team just, they worked here seven days in a row. We had generators brought in. It was quite the hub for both city operations and community operations, and I really appreciate the staff for dropping everything to make that happen. Turning our attention to police to continue to provide outstanding service, making Mercer Island one of the safest places to live in Washington State. My thanks to them. We had some turnover in our workforce, and so one of the really primary focuses of the last two years was recruiting new police officers, and I am proud to say we're almost fully staffed. I think we have one more in the academy. Certainly, emergency management is part of our police department, and they have been busy. I have a separate slide on that. We started to bring back events, many that had been canceled during the pandemic. National Night Out returned in August 2024, was very well-attended. The police department is linking arms with the rest of us to prepare for the light rail openings, so they've been supporting us on the parking planning and town center. They have had to move around a lot in two years. It's been highly disruptive. You may recall when City Hall closed, they first came here, and then summer season was here, so we had to kick them out because we were fully booked for summer camps. They moved to Luther Burbank, and then more recently, they've settled into the modular buildings. If you see one of the Mercer Island police officers, please give them our thanks for the patience and resiliency and adaptability they have demonstrated over the last two years. More recently, we're working on emerging concerns related to e-bike use and safety concerns around the city. So we have been out, really, this has been going on for 10 months now. PD is working with the school district and some staff in my office on the public information campaign. That photo there on the top of the slide is our team at a recent assembly talking about e-bike use and safety with the students. Again, really proud of all the work that they've done, and it's just a joy working with them every day. CPD, not much going on there. Kidding, of course, they've been so busy. In 2024, just by the numbers, over 300 development permits, over 200 land use permits, and 90 pre-application meeting requests. They're very busy. Meanwhile, we spent three years working on our comprehensive plan update, which was a great collaboration between the council, the planning commission, the community, and our staff, and really pleased that we adopted it by the end of last year. We also approved a new open space zoning district. The park zone is underway right now, and way more ordinances and interim regulations than I'll care to go through, and more work coming. Thank you to them for their great work. Next slide, please. Admin Services, led by the very talented Ali Speets, is a department that combines a whole bunch of internal service teams. First one on the list here is customer service. And Council, you may recall that during the pandemic, when we reorganized the staff, we centralized customer service, and thank goodness we did because they are the lifeline right now to the community with a closed facility. They continue to do amazing work, fielding 1,300 calls last year and being able to handle over 75% of them without forwarding to the other staff. That's just a great, a great score there. They also receive a number of emails, and they do other things for us, too. They have downtime, and so we're able to assign them special projects, which helps all of us out. On the HR side of the House, I'm really pleased to say we adopted our classification and compensation plan for nonrepresented staff. We've been working on that for almost four years. Really proud of that work. We switched from biweekly payroll to semi-monthly payroll. Again, something that we wanted to do for many years. It was quite a lift, but major operational improvements with that change. On the communications side, and I'm really pleased to announce that we'll have a new communications manager joining us in mid-June. Meanwhile, we have great email newsletter open rates, 60% average open rate, or continuing to work on other strategies to improve our communications engagement. And the records team, we couldn't ignore it anymore. When City Hall closed, you may recall in the basement, we had decades and decades of paper files. With that building planned to be demolished here probably in a year, we had to start digitizing those records. So the records team rolled up their sleeves, and just week by week, we're working through the piles. We are 50% through that project. Great job, you guys. The future staff is going to be really thankful that we got through all that. On the tech side, I want to highlight, so much goes on behind the scenes, but we upgraded the Room 104 in this building, Council, so we can now have exec sessions, and that technology is available for our renters. We're continuing to work on our server infrastructure and planning for the new building. We upgraded all of our GIS servers to improve our performance. So much going on behind the scenes, integration. One of the cool things I wanted to call out is that we have a pavement temperature sensor dashboard now, which allows our teams to know what's happening out on our pavement to support our de-icing operations during winter weather. Pretty cool stuff. Thank you to the IT team. And finance, well, you just saw our really talented finance director giving a presentation. Notwithstanding, we adopted your 2025, '26 biennial budget. We did a lot of important policy work, including a new cost allocation policy. We implemented bond financing for some really important utility projects, $26.6 million in bond proceeds. The big dog, the one that almost put Matt Morinac, our finance director, to early grave, we launched a new enterprise ERP system, which is just a fancy word for the finance software system. Our software system was so old, it was literally running on a hamster wheel, and we buckled down and said, we're going to do it. It has taken every finance team member every day of the last two years to build that system, and we went live earlier this year. Really, really proud of us. We have more to go. There's still modulators to be, modules to be implemented, but what a robust tool that will just pay dividends down the road. And you've already heard about the ARPA funding from Matt. Emergency management, we all lived through it, two water emergencies, a bomb cyclone, other power outages. The emergency management team has been great, thankful that we have them, and we have volunteers and staff trained and ready to go. We've held quite a few trainings, deployments. We have a great community emergency response team that's made up of volunteers. My absolute thanks to them. Next slide, please. And more. I want to give a shout out. This deck is always hard to put together when we look back because invariably, we miss some people. So my thanks to Eastside Fire and Rescue. I'm really happy with our first year partnering with them. You heard the financial side of it, but on the operation side, they're available, accessible. It really feels like they are our fire department, and we appreciate that partnership. So many other internal teams that didn't get a dedicated slide, but they are what drives everything we do. The city attorney, and I always joke, he's like, hey, you didn't include me in the presentation because I can't talk about any of the work he does, but our attorney, our human resources team, IT, GIS, all of the internal folks, thank you for keeping the city moving forward and helping us to deliver on that really robust work plan. So with that, that's my, that's the conclusion of my look back. I'm happy to pause, or we can keep going with the '25, '26 work plan.
Okay. Let's see if we have any questions because we've got a couple hands. Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, just, first of all, congratulations. Awesome work. I'm so impressed with everything you guys have accomplished. But a quick detail question, the stat you quoted on the battery recycling, is that solely attributed to the box we put in in the thrift store in response to fifth grader requests back in 2023?
You have a great memory. I will have to see if Alana is online and can tell me the source of that. She keeps meticulous records and data, and if she's not here, I will make sure, ah, there's Jason, not Alana. Jason, do you have an answer to the battery recycling question?
I believe that is correct, but I was just going to say we'll verify with you, and we'll have to email, but I believe, I believe that is correct.
Okay. For the record, my memory's not that good, but I heard the stat. I remember the email, went and looked it up while we were talking, so I'm going to have to send the young man a note. He deserves a lot of credit, it sounds like.
For sure. Councilmember Wyker.
I just want to say thank you, Jesse, and the entire team, and everyone endlessly. I'm just exhausted hearing about everything that's been done, and you didn't even talk about all the consultants and vendors that we're using to get all those public works projects done and planning done for our PSM building. And I just, your leadership and the team's leadership and dedicated service to the island for everything that comes up that we plan and everything that we don't plan is just so impressive and so appreciated, and just big, huge thank you and shout out to everyone every day who's working day in and day out to serve this community. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, Jesse, I'm not envious here to pull this together as a deck because I can't imagine not, I'm sure that you were worried that you didn't include someone because there's always so much going on, and you know, one thing I learned is that everyone on the, on the team here plays such an important role. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, but I think, you know, the stuff that gets delivered to the public is exceptional. I think we're very fortunate to have a staff that we do. You know, you can pick any example of something that was planned or something that was unplanned, and the response has been great, the delivery has been great, so I appreciate that. I'm kind of exhausted looking at this list, and I really didn't do any of the work, so thank you to you and the team for, for all you've accomplished the last year or so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, great job to you and the entire staff. It takes a lot to run a city, and it's great to get this very detailed picture every once in a while of what's going on and, and the great work that's going on out there. There's a lot more to do. Work is never done. It's a question of doing what, doing what we can and delivering a great service to the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe we'd be remiss if we didn't throw a bone to SPU for, they were working with us on, you know, water supply issues, and you know, granted, we've had some issues with infrastructure, but everybody does, but they have, their team has been great to work with, and we appreciate the work of SPU.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. If you want to move on to 2025.
All right. The look ahead, and we're already partway into 2025 here. So I'll just remind you, Council, this work plan is developed during our budget process. You, in your prior planning session, identified four priorities, and we work to align our work items with those priorities. We're also needing to meet federal, state, and local laws and address recent legislative mandates, so that's how we get to the budget work plan. Next slide, please. So in your packet, I just want to call out Exhibit 1 is the matrix. This document was born five or six years ago. It started out as a highlights matrix that was three pages long, and now it's a lot more than that. Exhibit 2 is the work plan that's from the budget, just the text version. When we came to you in February, and we just did a light touch on the work plan, you said, hey, can we just take everything out of the budget and put it into the matrix? And so we did that, and we'll definitely try it out. We have some things we want to change going forward and make it a little easier to read, but for now, everything from the budget's in there. You'll also see as you go through Exhibit 1 where we've added some new work items. A couple of them were just things we missed that you directed us to do during the budget, and some other things are items that I've added based on emerging needs, so those are called out. We usually check in with you on the work plan at least twice a year, usually as part of your planning session, so the next time we'll do an update will be in the fall, but a lot certainly happens between now and then. I am not going to go through this whole document, but I did put some slides together just to highlight some of the major items that we have, that we're working on. The big one, truly impacting the entire, all the departments, is the new public safety and maintenance facility. You know that we're working on schematic design, and we're anticipating this will be on the ballot in November. And so going beyond that, 2026 will be a design and permitting year. We would be breaking ground at the end of 2026 and under construction for '27, '28, and probably part of '29. This is important because it will take an entire project team to run this project, so we'll be relying on our consultants and probably some contracted staff to oversee this project. But just keep in mind, this is a city manager's office, finance department, public works, police, and others were all working on this project. We happen to have another major project happening right now as well. This is the new water supply pipeline as a result of the last water emergency. We've selected our design consultant. We have our general contractor, construction manager on board, and actually, that contract was on your consent agenda tonight, and we're underway with design. These two projects combined are pretty significant. Oh, but wait, there's one more major project on deck. Next slide, please. The Luther Burbank Waterfront Improvement Project, it's the shoreline and dock project. You can see the concept image there on the top. We'll be finishing our design and permitting this year, and it will be under construction in 2026. So keep that in mind before we add anything else to the work plan, that you have three major, truly major capital projects happening over the next two to five years. That final bullet here is just to remind you that on top of those three major projects, we have a long list of other capital projects to address aging infrastructure. I was at the Rotary Meeting today with the mayor and deputy mayor, and the mayor pointed out that, you know, why is everything failing right now? Well, it's because it was all built in the 50s and 60s. We're at the moment where it's at the end of its useful life. So I, this will be our theme, modernization and infrastructure improvement over the next at least three to five years, and I appreciate the council's leadership because we're making, we're completing work, we're getting projects done, and we have some really important, critical projects ahead of us. Next slide, please. Planning projects. I was mentioning a moment ago that while we're in construction, we're also planning for, for the next phase of construction and addressing other planning needs. We have a list of items here ranging across several departments. I'll just note that one of the things we will have to do in 2025 is begin the performance review of the solid waste contract. That work will be done by the first quarter of next year and presented to the City Council. Why are we doing this? It's because, believe it or not, we are on the horizon of the, the end of that 10-year contract with ecology, so this is the first step we take in determining what we're going to do next. We are doing a really important site plan at Dean's Children's Park to reimagine that playground area and provide for accessibility. We're working on an infrastructure plan at Clark and Groveland to, and you've got Groveland in the picture there. We have overwater structures that are aging and need to be replaced. Two big utility plans will be worked on over the next two to three years, the water system plan and the sewer plan. And we'll begin working on the pedestrian and bicycle facilities plan at the end of 2026 with the intent of completing it in 2027. And there's one plan not on the list, but I'll point it out when we get to the slide. Just a reminder, this broad theme of policy and code work in the planning department, over the next two years, we're planning to hopefully get caught up on our docket items, taking all of the interim regulations and making them permanent and addressing any other state other state mandates, of which we have a handful coming out of this legislative session. Some other policies we're working on, general theme of procurement, purchasing, and expense policy update. You heard me mention earlier that we're working on e-bike, e-motorcycle regulations. We're hoping to start work on our parks code update. The parks code and our municipal code has not been updated for a very long time. This is one of those that I'm already seeing might have to slide just a bit into 2026 and 2027, given all the other priorities, but we've got to get started on it. Council, you directed us to work on a number of public safety ordinances. I didn't list them all here, and it looks like I duplicated e-bike and e-motocycles, but I guess it's because it's important, so we listed twice. All right, legislative session impacts. In your agenda bill, we laid out the near-term work that we'll need to address, two bills that passed, and then a longer list of bills that will really load up over the next, in the next biennial. House Bill 1576 and 1757, and I won't go into this right now, we can talk about it later if you'd like. Will need to be adopted, implemented interim regs before the end of this year. I think one of those bills actually has a June deadline. On the financial side of the House, I won't repeat what Matt just shared. We'll have another biennial budget to work on next year. Certainly, the priority for the council and the staff is going to be long-term financial strategies, given the structural deficits that are projected in the next biennial. That's a range of things, reserve policies, contingency planning. Just a reminder that we do a utility rate study every biennial to inform our utility rates for the next two years, and a handful of other things like revisiting our synthetic turf field replacement fund. Finally, I want to call out what I think is going to be a theme for us with major equipment acquisition. The supply chain is not friendly right now. Fire trucks, for example, have a four-year lead time. We went out in partnership with Eastside Fire to replace our equipment, and just because of the supply chain issues and cost escalations, we were not successful. So I think this is going to be an issue for all of our major assets that we need to replace, so we've assembled a team and we're working on this. The Marine Patrol boats are going to be coming to you here before the summer recess for approval. We hope the fire trucks will be back on your agenda by the end of this year, quarter one of next year. Next slide. YFS, kind of the, the general information included here, just a reminder that we're really focusing on senior adults in the next two years. We just launched a seniorizing newsletter and have had great feedback. We're working on fall prevention programming for senior adults, and other services that support geriatric, geriatric case management and resource offerings. We'll continue to be partnering with the school district for counselors in schools, and working on stabilizing our YFS revenues. Next slide. The tech side, Ally and I were talking earlier today, we had to shorten this slide, there's so much happening right now on the tech side of our House, and by the way, technology includes IT and GIS. You may not know that we steward 170 unique platforms or software systems across all of the city, that's a lot. We're evaluating systems for upgrades and better integration. One of the great things about the new finance software is it actually speaks to some of our other platforms, saving us time and efficiency with the finance data being transitioned. We're starting to dive into AI in our work and looking at how AI integrates into all these platforms and systems. I want to call out that some of our most robust tech work has to do with the police department. We have body worn cameras on our list, in-car camera replacement, we need to upgrade our systems, and a digital evidence system. Also, we've added to the work plan the ALPR, stationary ALPR readers, which you know as a FLOC system, to come back to you with a presentation to talk about the potential uses. Next slide. Following along with police and emergency management, again, I'll, just with police in the portable buildings, we're having to continually adapt operations, that will continue to be a priority. Retention, actually, retention across the whole city is a top priority. Both police and fire and emergency management are continuing to work on the opening of sound transit light rail. The vessel replaced, the Marine Patrol vessel replacement I just mentioned is on this list. From emergency management, we'll be working on a continuity of operations plan, so there's another plan that's on the list, and we're continuing to recruit our emergency management volunteers and train for emergencies. Recreation and special events, a lot of policy work coming up. We need to update our athletic facilities policies. We have a new pickleball court, and one thing you may not be aware of is that we have groups that want to rent the pickleball courts, and so that's typically our courts, our first come, first serve, so we're going to be asking the Parks Commission to work with our staff on how to navigate the policies for the pickleball courts. We're going to continue to push high occupancy for rentals here at the community center, and we're also starting to work on So What Next at the Luther Burbank docks in the boiler building. In 2027, we'll be cutting a ribbon at new facilities, and there's an opportunity for some enhanced programming there, so '25 and '26 will focus on building out that. You, some of you have heard me talk about this, we often get calls, I would like to donate something, and there's not off, sometimes there's not alignment, somebody wants to give us something that doesn't match a need, so we're working on a gift needs inventory or a donation list, so that people that want to give to the city have a, a list of available opportunities, so that we can ensure better alignment. And then, of course, we're going to keep knocking it out of the park with some amazing special events this summer. All right, we're almost done here. On the climate action side, I mentioned the EV charging plan, so there's the other plan on the list of plans we'll be working on over the next two years. This building that we're in has to be in compliance with the state clean, state clean building performance standards. In just a couple of years, Alana's working on that. Long list of other things, including we've got some open space actions here. I'll remind you that Pioneer Park Open Space Restoration is funded by the Parks Levy, so we have continuing work happening there, really robust levels. Next slide. The city clerk, lots and lots going on. You all work really closely with Andrea Larson and Deb Estrada, so you have an idea of what they're working on. It will be, it's never business as usual, but continuing to work on records management in partnership with the city attorney's office, recruiting and filling vacancies for your boards and commissions, training on the Public Records Act, we'll be onboarding new council members this fall, excuse me, winter, and into next year, so that will be part of their work plan. Next slide. On the customer service side, again, I would say it's, no, no day is the same, but they're continuing to help us during this time without a, being virtually accessible, supporting our administrative tax, tasks. On the communication side of the list, just a reminder that we'll be doing a survey, a community-wide survey, we're working on email marketing strategies, and we're going to be doing this project, our new communications manager doesn't know this yet, but a major photo reorganization management system. We have photos going back, you know, many decades, and they're all over the place, so we need to get that sorted out. All right. Council, I want to call out for you, so that, that is, that is the high fly over the work plan. I didn't cover anything, everything, I didn't even cover all the departments, our teams, but I wanted to call out some of the key features. One area where I think our work plan fell just a little bit short, I'm not asking that we do anything about it tonight, is priority one. This speaks to developing a comprehensive long-range plan for town center. So we've been working on this in pieces, we have new parking regulations that we'll be rolling out, we have a lot of legislation coming down from the state that will impact our development codes and housing in the town center. We have lots of transportation projects underway, there's sewer construction happening. But, but the, the theme of this comprehensive long-range plan for town center, I'm not sure that we've met that through this work plan. What I will suggest is, council, this should be on our list for the planning session next year, to, to review everything that we've completed, and then perhaps provide some more direction on what this means to you. We have a new comprehensive plan that speaks pretty intensely to economic development in our town center, so that should be our guide. Next steps, this is my last slide. We'll continue to keep you posted through our agenda bills on the progress in our work plan. I will be back, probably not this in-depth, but we usually check in with you on the work plan in the fall as part of the mid-biennial budget process. We'll also start working on the next legislative session this fall, which definitely feeds into our work plan. And finally, a reminder that in quarter one of 2026, we hold a planning session with the council to start working on the next 2027, 2028 biennial plan, which is both the budget and the work plan. That is all I have, happy to take any questions. I think all of the directors are either here or online, should you have any questions about items in their work plans.
Excellent, well, thank you for that update. It's a mountain of work. Any, any questions from council? No, not seeing any here. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
I don't have a question, but I do have a, well, I have a comment, first of all, this is, this is great, there's obviously a lot going on. I was worried the last slide there would be, we don't think we can take an August recess, but.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Hopefully, that's not, not the case. I have a, a suggestion to change when, when.
Okay, yeah, go for it.
And I apologize to my colleagues that I didn't circulate this in advance, but we finished it this afternoon based on some conversations with staff and some members of the community as well. Andrew, would it be possible to put this on the screen, just so I don't have to hear my own voice read it? So this is, this is meant to sort of be, to augment, and I would say sort of improve what's currently in the work plan around stationary ALPR. This would set a timeline for when we want to do this, and sort of just clarify a little bit what we're looking to learn as part of the, the staff work when that comes back, and also appropriate some funds to, to get the pilot program running. Obviously, the staff will come back to council before next year, or no later than the first quarter of next year, to, to sort of share learnings, but I think this is a, a good step, sort of, in this conversation, as we've been hearing a lot about FLOC cameras, the potential safety improvements that they would have for our community. So I don't know if I'm asking, I'm not making an amendment, I'm assuming I should.
No, just make a motion.
I move that we, I move what is on the screen.
Okay, I'll second that. City clerk, you have the motion?
I do.
For the record, I'll read it.
Yes.
The motion was to direct the city manager to implement a pilot program to test stationary automatic license plate reader ALPR equipment on Mercer Island, and to appropriate $15,000 from available funds to support the installation, operation, and evaluation of the pilot program. This pilot program will replace work item 3.5 in the police department's 25 through 2026 work plan. City staff are further directed to return to the city council no later than the first quarter of 2026, with a follow-up presentation on the results and findings of the pilot program, including system performance and operational evaluation, legal privacy and data retention considerations, community feedback and outreach outcomes, proposed policies, procedures, recommendations for future use. And I would say that's probably the end of the motion. Okay, do you want to speak to the motion any more than that?
No.
All right, councilmember Weicher.
I wonder, Jesse, if you could speak to the motion and the $15,000?
Yes, I will try, and actually, I, I told deputy mayor Rosenbaum he needed to blame me for the, he asked me about this last week, and I actually did not get the motion done until tonight, so I apologize, you didn't get a heads-up email because I was behind. So I've talked to the police department, we've, we've had a lot of feedback requesting FLOC cameras on the island, and more recently, respect, requesting us to share data with private FLOC, FLOC system on the island, which for a variety of reasons, doesn't work operationally. It sounds like there's a lot of questions about how it works, and we are supportive of piloting it. What, what we would do, $15,000 would probably take an area, perhaps an intersection, if we could get agreement with WashDOT to place FLOC cameras on the ingress egress points, we'd probably choose that first. If that process is delayed, we may choose another intersection. I think it's important for us to gather data, be able to talk about how it's being used, and share more information before we fully deploy, so this seemed like something that the deputy mayor was interested in, and that's, you have the support of the police department and the city manager's office for this amendment to the work plan.
That's all I needed, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, I'm a little nervous about this. I, I was, I, I understand the desire for the security that such a system might provide, and I, and I acknowledge that, it's a real concern and something that needs to be addressed. I was fully supportive of having the police department and the staff explore the possibility of doing this, and I, and I think that was appropriate to have on the work plan. We know from the presentation we last had on this subject back in 2024, I can't recall exactly when it was, that there are significant unanswered questions about public records implementation, or public records implications of such a program, and I think those public records implications potentially put members of the island in danger from having that information available, where anybody around can track who's coming on and off the island, and, and when they're leaving and when they're going. And in, until we have good answers on those questions, I'm not prepared to support a pilot.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that, and I would just let the public know that we did have that discussion, we had it with ACLU, and amongst the council will be implemented mobile-based ALPR, and I don't know if anybody at the police department wants to provide any sort of feedback on, you know, have there been a lot of public records requests from the mobile-based ALPR data? But certainly, I haven't heard any outcry from the public, and I have heard a significant amount of feedback from the public that they do want enhanced technology tools to try and provide public safety in ways that haven't been used in the past. I don't know if there, is there anybody that can speak to the public records requests that we may or may not have received?
Neither one of you. Joining me tonight is Michelle Bennett, she is here as interim chief capacity, and Mike Seifert, Commander Mike Seifert, is here as well.
Good evening, council. We have not had, to our knowledge, any public disclosure requests for our APLR. In conversations with other agencies who have used the FLOC camera system, the holder of the data is the FLOC company, so requests, so there's a 30-day running time where those records are destroyed? I can speak further to that if you'd like, or.
No, I mean, I, I think it speaks volumes that, you know, we, we as representatives of the community, looking out for the concerns that we hear, I think it's incumbent on us not to spread fear, come up with arguments that haven't happened, and when we have this pilot program with three vehicles for multiple years now equipped with ALPR running around, not having received a single public records request, I, I think that a pilot project on a fixed-based ALPR makes a ton of sense to me. If a person was concerned enough that they didn't want to be captured by the pilot program, it would be a single intersection that they'd be able to avoid. So while I respect the sentiment, I just don't respect that, you know, we're creating a situation where people's lives are putting, being put at risk by implementing something like this. Okay, councilmember Reynolds, old hand, new hand?
New hand.
Okay, councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, I acknowledge your, your comment, Mr. Mayor, and I respect that, thank you. I'm just going to make the point that a, a fixed system is entirely different than a, than a mobile system, that the mobile system tells you when somebody's driving down the street, a fixed system tells you, if it put on the on and off ramps, when somebody leaves the island, when somebody comes back on the island, it tells you when somebody is typically away from their home, when somebody is typically in their home, that is information that's potentially extremely valuable to potential burglars, to potential stalkers, all kinds of things like that. And I, and, and I don't feel like we have an answer to that question on how to prevent that, and the fact that we haven't gotten public records requests on the mobile systems, it doesn't give that sort of information, so I don't think it's a real indicator of what we might get from a fixed system.
Okay, deputy mayor Rosenbaum.
Interim chief, maybe you could address that a little bit in terms of the, some of the limitations on what is avail, what information's available and what's not in terms of public records requests, and who owns that information?
So one of the things also, say why Michelle's on her way up here, is we would need to draft policies, it would be drafted by our police department for the pilot program, would specify what data is retained, so is it all license plates, is it just stolen vehicles, is it? Is it some other list? So we do have, we do drive the decision-making over what, what data is collected and maybe if you have anything else to add to that, that's.
So the research I've done on those systems, right before I came here, I was at another agency and we had just implemented or written a grant to get all of those systems for that agency. So in speaking with some surrounding agencies who currently, and there's about 84 in the state right now that have flock cameras, police agencies. So what those cameras do is they actually track the vehicle, not the person. So they're just looking at the, the specifics of the vehicle, whether that's the license plate, the color of the vehicle, the model of the vehicle, and it can track it from city to city. Flock Systems keeps that data. That's their data. And there's some nuances around that, but in talking with the, the folks at Flock, as they're the holder of the data, as I was speaking to a neighboring agency, if there's any requests that come in, they're forwarding those requests to Flock since they're the holder of the data. So that calls into that, is that public records? And it's still kind of a nuanced area there for legal. In talking with Flock, every 30 days, they purge the, the records that they have. The only time that they hold on to those is if we request that for evidentiary value, i.e. there's a robbery, it's a gray vehicle, we have a license plate, we track it into another city, then they can hold that data for us for the case. But the other agencies I have spoken with have not had any significant issues with anything related to public disclosure requests.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Weinberg?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm feeling very torn about the, the whole concept of setting up cameras at the free entrances of our island. It kind of changes the, the feel of being a visitor to the island, of you're being watched. I, I understand the benefit, however, that having these cameras on the free entrances and exits, if that's what we end up doing, and we realize there's a pilot talking about one, but still, it's, you know, you start with one. I, I realized that it was a deterrent to threat, or to, a deterrent to possible threats, to possible criminals coming in and, and burglarizing the island. I'd be interested in this pilot study to see an analysis of what have other communities seen? Have they seen a net reduction in crime? And is the trade-off, there, there is a non-zero risk to privacy of doing this. And, but there's also a non-zero gain to safety. So I'd like to see an analysis of that. And have there been public disclosure requests or public records requests of these other agencies? And what information do they get about the people requesting it? If a criminal is reaching out to a police department and saying, give me all this data, do they have to say who they are? They have to say where they're from? And would that deter a criminal from reaching out to get the data? So I'm interested in learning more about this and, but I do have some hesitations about the whole, the whole concept.
I think you bring up a really good point. I just wanted to bring up something clarifying. The way the flock cameras are set up is they have certain parameters. So they'll be set up for hits. So the officer has a computer in their car and you, as a city, assign what hits you will get. So you can put into the system, I want to see stolen vehicles, I want to see escaped prisoners, I want to see missing and endangered persons affiliated with a plate. And you set up those parameters. So those are the only hits we get. It's not kind of a ollie, ollie, income-free, let's look at every plate. It's specified to the hits that we put into that system, how many we have or how many we don't. That's the only information that we get hits on to gather to look at a plate or a vehicle further. I hope that helps.
So, so you're saying that we are not generating a database that is public records requestable that contains a list of absolutely everybody going on, or going, passing by that camera? It would be pre-filtered to the city based on certain parameters that we set for them?
Correct. Correct. That's the way the systems are set up at other cities. We're looking for specific parameters related to types of crimes, like we're, we're looking for wanted felons that are associated with this plate. We're looking for stolen vehicle hits. We're looking for missing and endangered persons. So those are the parameters. We get hits on the vehicle, which is a link that alerts on the officer's computer saying, this is a wanted person.
Okay. And so the hits can be requested as public records, but the underlying data that Flock has about everybody going past that intersection is not therefore.
That, that is data they retain. The only thing that we'll get is if we put a request into them saying, hey, we had a hit on this. And that's only, that's really only used if it goes into some kind of criminal trial where the court would ask for that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good questions. Councilmember Andrell?
Yeah, thanks for this information. This clarification is really helpful. I, I have had concerns about privacy, but some of those have been alleviated by the information about the limited amount of information that the city will get and retain as public record. You know, if, if all we're looking for is, you know, a license plate where something has already been determined to have gone wrong, stolen car or something like that, I am, I am more in favor of it. On, on the other hand, I have to say my enthusiasm for the cameras, and I voted for the ALPRs and I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. My enthusiasm for the stationary cameras is somewhat tempered by my skepticism of how much of a deterrent they really are. Because, and, and this is when citizens call me and say, you know, we want these cameras, I, I say, well, look, if stationary cameras really deterred crime, then nobody would ever rob a convenience store. And convenience stores are robbed all the time. And, and banks are robbed all the time. And they're bristling with cameras. So, you know, I don't know. I mean, I, I guess we probably just need to delve deeper into this to see how much of a deterrent it might be or how much of a crime-solving tool it might be. I'm kind of on the fence, but I'm, I'm not, not opposed to a pilot. So I, I guess there's no question in there, but I, I just kind of wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds?
I guess the key question I still have at this point is, you suggested that the, the issue of public records and flock possession of the data is nuanced. Does that mean it's not clear whether a public records request would apply to them or not? Do we know the answer to that definitively?
Councilmember Reynolds, before we deploy the pilot, we'll be engaging our city attorney. It's my opinion that the data housed by Flock is a public record. We are not housing it here at the city, which means if you wanted to provide a public records request for the hits we got on May 10th, it would come to the city and Flock would have to provide that data. We haven't delved into how that works yet, but the data is not housed by the city. That doesn't mean it's not a public record. It's not housed by the city. The retention, we understand that standard retention from Flock is 30 days, so they're constantly purging the data that they have hits on. But we need to, we need to learn more about it. That's my opinion as a city manager, that it is a public record, it's just not data held by the city.
Thank you. That, that's very helpful. And it, but I, I'm, I'm not going to be comfortable supporting this until we have definitive answers to those questions. And so I'll just note that for the record. But I do have one final question, if I may ask, or I think it's the final one, which is, let's say you got a hit from a stolen car. How would that information be used? And Mercer Island has, I think, 75 miles of roads. By the time the police got there, they could be anywhere else on the island. So would it help?
Yeah, speaking with some neighboring agencies that utilize flock cameras, I asked, well, how often do you use these with hits? And he said, all the time. They're very useful because it's real-time data. So depending on where the cameras are, you might get a hit and you have real-time data of where that vehicle is within seconds. So if you're able to get to that vehicle or contact another agency that might be in the pathway of that vehicle, it's, it's recent data versus, it would be difficult if, say, a neighborhood had that information and we weren't tied into that system. And somehow that would have to come to us and then we would have to try to figure out where the car is and there would be a delay. But utilizing the system as a department, it's real-time information as it's happening.
Right. But you, the cars could be, the, any police cars on duty could easily be 10 minutes away from the freeway when they got that hit, right? So by the time they got up there, how do we know where the car is then?
Well, this is part of why the, the nice part about Flock currently is that so many agencies have flock cameras currently. We're able to trace them from city to city. In my previous city, we solved some crimes, found bad guys in Toquilla that had burglarized Edmonds.
Okay. I'll let it rest.
Councilmember Wyker?
Andrea, could you pull up the motion again, please? And I'll just say I'm still supportive of doing the pilot and seeing what we need to know or don't know and want to figure it out. So I think we're talking about $15,000 in the first quarter. To get a pilot done, when? Remind me of the timing, Jesse?
Have it done by, by then.
Yeah.
No later than Q1 2026.
Thank you.
Q1 2026. We're going to try to do this in, like, sometime between now and then or do it then? Sorry, I'm.
We would begin working on implementing the pilot, probably over the next couple of months. Do the pilot, I would say in the fall, collect data and be back in front of you no later than quarter one 2026. It might be sooner.
Right. Collecting data in January doesn't make a lot of sense. I'm still supportive just to see how this works and see what data we get, see what kind of feedback we get from our community and then decide on the bigger picture later. But I think trying to figure out what we want and how this works, what the data is, and if the police think it helps, and it certainly helps with inter-agency support for catching the bad guys, let's go. So thank you, Dave, for bringing it forward.
Okay. Not seeing any other discussion. City Clerk, please call the rule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Mayor Nice?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Nay.
And Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much. And that gets us to.
Wait.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Councilmember Wyker?
I just had a quick question for Jesse. All that work you're doing in the next six months, I keep hearing about FIFA and what other cities are doing to prepare for mayhem that might ensue in 2026. Could you just talk a minute about what we're doing and how we're collaborating to be ready, if you haven't already?
What's FIFA? Just kidding, just kidding. Yeah, we have a big World Cup event coming. I was just part of a internal planning meeting about a month ago. Our emergency management team and police department are leading our preparation efforts. I don't have an update for you tonight, Councilmember Wyker, but if the council's interested, I'd be happy to have Amanda Caver Camp come and share with you all the things we're working on. As you know, regionally, big impact. So we're tied in with Seattle, King County and all the neighboring cities in the Puget Sound region and actually statewide.
And that's all I needed to know. And I think the community needs to know because it sounds like mayhem's coming and we're going to be ready for it as much as possible.
That's right. We need a presentation on the Augusta Rule for Home Rentals. All right. City Manager, we have upcoming, let's see, we have other business and planning scheduled. Anything to report there?
I think I've talked enough tonight, so no, nothing else on the planning session.
Counsel, any absences to report? Nope, nothing there? All right. Deputy Mayor, anything to report?
Yeah, we had a PEC meeting last week. There was, I'll share this out with, with the council. There was a presentation about solid waste and the county. And there's some pretty significant rate increases coming from, from that. So there was sort of a discussion about how do we think about reducing our landfill requirements and, and more recycling, more reusing. But I'll share that with the council. There was, there's some interesting folk, perspectives from people on the PEC from some of the smaller cities about the costs and sort of how they are going to message that with their constituents. But I'll, I'll share that deck around from PEC, from SCA. Want to give a shout-out too for the farmer's market, which is supposed to be a summertime thing and it's pretty cold outside, but maybe it'll be warm come June. I think it's June, June 1st, right? Yeah. That Sunday. And Jake and I were supposed to ring the opening bell. So I'll be thinking of him, but want to invite anyone else. I think it's festivities start at 9:45 and there's, got to be a musical performance from high school as well. So if you can make it, that'd be great.
Excellent. I have nothing to report. Councilmember Wyker, anything to report?
Nothing to report, thanks.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yeah, my next monthly open lunch will be at 12:00 PM on Saturday, June 21st, 21st at Mio Posto. Address is 260176 Avenue Southeast, as if everyone on the island didn't already know it. As always, all are welcome and it's an open agenda as always, new sports, weather, humor, whatever you want to talk about. And all I ask is that everyone shows their respects to the chef by ordering some food and/or beverage. And let me know if you're coming so I can make sure we reserve enough tables.
All right. Councilmember Reynolds?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Andrell?
Nothing.
Okay. The next regular scheduled hybrid city council meeting will be held Tuesday, June 3, beginning at 5:00 PM. The city council will now go into executive session for approximately one hour to consider selection of a site where the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101B and to discuss with legal counsel pending a potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. The time is now 7:45 PM. As a reminder to council, please stay seated until staff determine the broadcast. Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight.